Last week's order.
Uh, um.
That was for, that's Dylan's. Dylan's thing.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a bill coming through for you guys from Sanford Hospital for sexual assault kit and subsequent treatment that was done. For on April. Pursuant to state law, the county of chief of events actually incurred an order to pay for that. Testing and subsequent care in the hospital. And Dawn stated it was originally seven, eight thousand pound bill. She contacted, like, it brings in this down by eight hundred and something.
Seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
But pursuant to state law, we're required to pay those. You wanted to come. Apart from that, uh, I, there is the mine in there for this week too. I think so. Uh, there will be a bill from me in there. I ordered some external hard drives for digital storage, a laptop, computer, and a microphone, all for less than five hundred bucks. I needed them for grand jury proceedings and digital discovery materials for or kids as body cam, body cash, can't afford it, stuff like that. I just, I ordered it off Amazon, they poured it out of my own pocket. Bill has an attached, uh, printout photo sheet from Amazon for details. Apart from that, I don't have anything else. I wish I had questions there.
Nothing on this end, Dylan? Thank you.
Alright, good shit.
I think Doug ended up going to the dentist, so he missed the way.
Got to go in for a meet.
Okay, I'll have a copy of that call.
Oh, yeah. He is up to, he said in the past, he's used the one at the jail, but one of the jails broken. So he'd like to purchase his own for that and a couple of scrubbing pads and buffing pads and four, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Motion to approve the request for floor buffer by Carlson, second by Miguel. All in favor, signify the saying on motion begins.
Well, it's kind of a pain for him to have to go all the way to get it.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a heavy machine that they have up there. Apparently it's not working.
Treasury's department, they have a request, you want to talk about that?
It's just amazing to me though, he talks about, we use to get our computer products from, and then he goes online, buys a laptop, a microphone, all his hard disk for a fraction that we pay for stuff.
But then a lot of times.
I know, it's a support issue.
No, well, yeah, because we have to end up getting it.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying that there's a, there's a big difference in price.
Yes, there is.
Treasury sending a hand.
Circulate down. Forty-five maybe from this island, somewhere around there. I happened to notice my brother grew by the landfill today that they're just putting black dirt on the slopes going down, they must be getting dirt slopes to the end there. We got all this equipment out there. They only represent effectively what that means. There's a day at times where the record. So we're gonna figure this one out. Three nights. One, two, yeah, four nights. Four nights.
Who is it for?
For the ram quota for Jim Pearson, four nights at the Watertown Hotel. That's okay?
Well, I mean.
He was there for a meeting, I told him, so the meeting went on in the evening.
Training and some kind of meeting, so I guess rather than driving back and forth, I.
Do you give reimbursement for that? We give reimbursement.
Yeah.
What are these days?
We'll get done early, then you can go.
You wanna add the minutes that Dawn and I went to Watertown on Thursday and attended first district open house? Ribbon cutting, yeah. Big crowd.
There was quite a few there.
Nice offices. Get a kick out of Dennis, point out this one, we do look at all the offices, one guy's got hanging out on the wall, he had like a trombone that was run over by a car, it's gonna flatten out, and a, what was it, a trumpet? Flute or something, it's all this flattened out. Equipment in his wall, he's got, that's pretty cool.
Need to repurpose the old entrance.
Yeah, I guess. Last week you guys were talking about, I listened to the meeting office. Oh, we were talking about out at the jail there, with their, they had all these big gas dills in different places, and they weren't utilizing the pumps out of the jail, and we could get an answer for that, if we were on there.
Tank wasn't dry?
At the time, the, wasn't the tank empty? And they at least hadn't gotten the connecting.
Oh, get one.
Yes, she gets filled, and so it ran empty.
Everybody's abandoning chip on us, Dawn.
I guess.
Why not come back?
I sent the stuff down to that Jessica.
Hey, Dawn. Hi, Jen. Is it gonna be like a week, five, 10 minutes before anything happens?
I would say.
What?
Five, 10 minutes.
It's gonna be like five, 10 minutes before anything happens, I need to walk over to the office and then leave something and come back.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting for. We're kinda waiting for one or another brandy will come or else can't, so.
Okay, so, so I should be fine going across?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna, we won't quit an executive session.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be back. Alright.
We got it for you. But, yeah, got lost. So John would have to service here. Yeah, so this guy didn't buy it from here.
I was buying my police cars.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the inventory, what you have, how many nails, how many, what you do there as well.
Yeah.
If we're gonna get original ones, we can check what's in the mold.
Yeah, well, there's always two or three sitting out there. I suppose some of those are transport vehicles, maybe when I'm out there, I see them, or I don't know.
We could go ask about those two downloads, or one thing just sits there.
Really?
Well, he said we can keep it from that. How accurate do we have? I mean, I, I don't know, I'd like to see that before.
You know, I just, we talked about it a long time ago, that these guys, they become their personal cars that take them home, take them home every day, I mean, you could have half the fleet if, if the guys just drove their vehicle, and they say, well, they're policing to and from, they're holding their lights to that with the argument, but still, it's a company car, shouldn't we all, say?
Well, if you do that, obviously, so many people walk. Sure.
Do you have, you have a list of, probably those handy or make it up? Mine is not current.
I, I don't have a current one, I need to.
Okay.
We will make a new current list.
Yeah.
We have fifty grand, it's a big number between the car and the, set it up properly. That kind of doesn't like that in trucks.
I should have had a half cage of things.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you're right.
I always did have one, but if you go out, you want to feed it, I don't think.
We got three now. Just about every American made make.
Yeah.
We have a motion to go through this, please. Carter? Yeah.
Second by the, all in favor, she looked up the same night.
Alright, can I carry you?
Did you guys read that's a renewed there?
I didn't, yes, you know. You do?
Yeah. Yeah.
What was it?
Well, I think it's road, Castle Road is prior to public. You know?
Astor Road?
Cast, C E D R, downright into the lake.
Oh.
Yeah.
What did he say?
The Superior Court agreed with Flummer, you know? That it's a public, you know, that it's a public road, but it's not maintained by the county or township. Yeah, it was interesting.
I think, I think people think this is a public road, it's supposed to be maintained by the county. I got it, it means a private road is for age, private individuals.
It's my road, so we can't ride it.
Road that accesses a public road, own, not part of the county or township thing, but it's, it's a public road because all the other things use it, but it doesn't maintain by the.
That's just perfect looking for, it's not maintained.
I think that's not a bad rule, but it's a public road, doesn't need to be maintained by anybody.
I think I'll be up when somebody does, you know, Dr. Uster, and then at the end of that road, and then who decided, who draw it or whatever.
No, but, yeah, I think I remember that, that conversation we've been.
I've looked at a lot of baseball years ago, in a new area, they really built, and that was my approach, was that. Who, who's the food maintenance group that's well, I said, no.
I did.
No.
Well, it's kind of like that development, that it basically was private road, this was maintained by the, the developer to access the houses that they were selling lots of those.
Oh, they were to access this, maintained by the, by the developer or whatever.
Yeah, well, that lake stuff, especially baseball, they don't mess that place in terms of zoning, just, that's a disaster. Well, the two, I saw a deal like, I used a house on, uh, Lake Travers, built in 2015, currently up for sale, for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe it's just he's asking for a pie in the sky, or an accident for only three thousand bucks. That doesn't seem right, does it?
No.
A six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, now, maybe when she, or when anyone went out there, looked at that house, three, four years ago, it was, you know, half that valuation, even that seemed like a deal, that's at three thousand bucks.
Well, it's because you asked.
Sure.
It might be a two hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, it was a little, again, nice, it was like thirty-five hundred square feet, multiple levels. Yeah. You know where Tony Ballis lives?
No.
Just north of there, if that's the right direction down there, like two hours, or something like that.
Up the lift, yeah.
I get confused down there. I don't know who, what the name of the person is, just, just north of, just, yes, if it's, that's north, it's two houses down.
It was on the map, you know what I'm saying?
It was Tony's.
Yeah. It's a, did that picture?
Yeah, it was a nice looking place, yeah. The back is a lot of windows, it's at least, maybe I came, there was a two-story with a lock on, it was a two-story, but the second still, third one locked on. Built 2015, I always wondered if that's that guy that came in here, remember that guy that came in a couple of years ago, and was like, oh, I put used cabinets in there, and that's, you know, the same old story on the lake, you know, I got the worst lake shore on the lake, blah, 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 everybody had to get their taxes down, but we may open that general area, if it's that guy or not, but. I think so, his taxes should might have been twice that much.
Well, if it's six hundred thousand.
Six fifty is the ask, yeah.
His taxes should be unwaisted ten dollars.
Times this, this is what it looks like. We found it, right there. Like, it's a two-story then, or a lock on? Lock on, yeah. Yeah, I wonder if I can see it now?
I'd like to know who it is, and I could pull it up, and see what it's valued at.
Oh, yeah.
As far as taxes.
I'm sure meeting wasn't even, hasn't been appraised since it was built, maybe in 2015, I don't know.
Yeah. It doesn't matter what it says, Dan, there's a horse insists, and they're asking a hundred and fifty thousand more, assessed, I could get seventy-eight thousand, I don't know what it's worth.
Right now, it's just, you know.
Good time to be selling a house or a car, or a boat or anything.
Yeah, except the car, I mean, you better, if you're gonna sell your house, and sure you have some, if you're gonna sell your car, you better have.
Yeah, you're gonna make that one end and lose it on the other.
And he's actually removing his cars down to Texas, that they're gonna, they're moving it for.
Control the van. Was he able to get that house he was looking at, or no?
He looked at it for a weekend, and he's actually in Stillwater, because they're movers, and they're packing up. So he's flying home, he's flying back to Texas, like, five o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, did he already go on stuff down there then, or?
A lot of houses, different houses will come up, and that just seems like, you know, like he wants a three-story garage, because most people, yeah. He's thinking that I'm just more comfortable, I mean, I started outside, because that's how we live, so.
Yeah, you go down there, I mean, I see a lot of carports, you know, I like to see that.
Sitting outside.
Yeah. You go in California too, you have carports, and your washer and dryer are sitting outside as well, and.
Or you're doing one.
Yeah, I used to see that stuff, before we all lock all my stuff up.
You do, right?
Yeah, just.
Yeah. Wanna find the name? You do find it, I think, I try to look up something, like, find somebody, you know, oh, I get access to these sites, I wanna charge them money to.
They all say free, and then you get in, and you get the footage, they say, oh, so many next number, not all of them.
Yeah. That's got a Bronze Valley address.
It's way down there.
Yeah, oh, you see, yeah, Littenhurst, where Littenhurst used to live, that was a Bronze Valley address.
Way south of that.
Yeah. Sell it by yourself, a camp which would be in play, did as well, and hit the roof for a year.
You should just sell it and buy a motorhome, and I used to, how was it, with a motor?
Yeah, but those, those motorhomes are all.
Oh, I buy some old, yeah, hunkers, that was, depreciated, yeah, I don't know, I could buy a motor, those big motorhomes.
Older, those things have got so expensive. And they're expensive, someone told me once, they rented one, just kind of like a amplification thing, this way, years ago, they'd pull that thing in. And they're expensive, someone told me once they rented one, just kind of like a fanification thing, this was way years ago, they pull that thing into a, a park and spend the night was really expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it means like forty, forty, you have that extra big lot to pull it into, it.
That's right, of course, if you can stay, it's pretty nice to look after the couch and that, but.
Yeah.
Trouble is you gotta go over to hotel, like, these are.
Yeah.
Working, Walmart working around, I guess.
Yeah, you see, like, that's, yeah, yeah, the alleys out, the flights are out, like a couple of lawn chairs out there, and.
The value of the house, the taxable value is twenty-nine thousand.
How much?
No, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four seventy-one.
Two hundred and sixty.
That's just the house.
It's just the house and the front, and the land is two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five.
Two thousand dollars money. What were the taxes on that?
I know all the lake property was done.
It is, yeah, it was done three years ago. Travis was.
Well, I think, yeah.
Of course, that, well, two thousand fifteen, you built the house, but.
It'll be up for sale.
Should have worked on that, yeah. Someone for comparative sales. Yeah, okay.
I thought they were the point of the new script, they cost so much.
Me, here's what the house is, I mean, the land would be a, and that itself, that was my theory, two hundred dollars, I don't know, I'm sure.
It wasn't.
It was fairly large.
Twenty dollars a foot, on some of those lots.
Hope you get that, it would be a nice little capital gain over six years. One double. I think we won, but more. I would say there's a fair amount of lakes around, I think that, I don't know, upstate.
Are we gonna do anything on that annex building, the scene situation or whatever?
See that bidding, I didn't qualify for that.
No.
What? We gotta get the business, and if they wouldn't feel comfortable, that, I guess, the same with it. She would want to give the business a.
I think it needs to be bid out according to charter specs, what they recommend.
Shouldn't we do a bid in the paper and, and, um.
Yeah, maybe, we're not having luck any other way.
And then send it to some of the, you guys have companies that you wanted to send to?
There's a group out of Moore Tom, and they have, my nephew's quite a lot.
Why?
More, more, sort of, a lot of Moore Tom, is it, or right up there by Wapington?
Moore.
Moore, okay.
Yeah, it's, this, this is still, like, Moore.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's the.
Okay.
We, we use that, move this air conditioning.
Yeah.
Somebody else had, I mean, their, their work, maybe a little more expensive, but you have an issue right there.
Yeah.
I would definitely send him one.
Did you have someone you had, uh, over there?
Uh, I think he was from Wheaton, he was doing some work down here, and I don't think he ever did show back up again. I think Doug said that he had called, Doug talked to him, got her phone number or whatever, and that's as far as it went.
Cause I know this company did, uh, man church, the new, they did all the meeting there, the new structure and so forth, and so, you know, more to complete residential.
Yeah.
And CDJ, and I think did the one over Grace, which is a big, big unit. And they were the ones that said it might be a year or even two.
Is there a big company out of Millbank, that, uh, seems advertised in the paper quite a lot, uh, maybe Texas maybe, or?
Somebody was telling me about a place in Millbank.
They seem to advertise a valley shop all the time.
I need to bid that out, we don't have to cost us anymore.
I think it's.
Did, you know, everybody's, oh, we need to get on somebody's account, or it's gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
We can put bandages on it if they, uh.
Yeah, spend a lot of money, you know, in a fair and awful way.
Exactly. I don't, you need to go back to Bolton again and ask him to take a look at that land, uh, shop out there. I stopped out and talked to him a couple of, for a couple of months, it was not, uh. Nothing happened, I know they're busy.
I wonder if we should, it's been a record for a person, I wonder if we should invest the possible structure, just to see where, maybe it's still.
Probably today, now, yeah. What would it be, if you had someone just like a Moore come up to you, just to give you a bid, and have some idea, I mean, they'd be high, of course, but.
Yeah, but at least you have, say, all this, same reasons, so, um, just proceed, try, just out of, out of reason, then we might as well, time to be.
The, the number I keep in the back of my head is about two hundred thousand bucks, which I don't get to invite them much these days, but, you know. Again, with that tension, that maybe you could, you know, in a couple of years, you could add on.
Let's do. Let's see.
Yeah.
Or we could find out, download something like that, we could use some of that second.
Yeah, then maybe the whole thing.
Then, then we finish it.
Yeah.
Until we find out, you know, until you just move.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Get back.
So I got information from that Peter Bridge, um, we did have Red, uh, Lake, Red Lake Builders got the bid, and. Problem is, they're waiting for them to build the box culvert, they can't evidently get the box culvert built. And they're waiting, waiting, waiting there, so, it's one of them deals with the COVID related thing where. He's mentioned something about the steel, wanting to concrete, you know, trying to get this snap to build it, and they've been waiting for it to be built for the last three months. Until years anymore, he said he's gonna try to shoot them an email again and find out, but that's the whole deal, so.
What's the name of, what's the name of the?
Either Creedex or somebody over in Minnesota is building that.
Oh, they're, one they got the bid for the bridge?
Uh, they're called, uh, Red Lake Builders, they're out of Northern Minnesota, I believe. Um, they got the bid, uh, but they've done a lot of work, they've tried around here, building all the different things, so, but they actually got the bid. The holdup is, uh, the concrete, I guess, and the box culvert, so.
So he's not even optimistic that it'll happen this year?
He didn't say, yeah, and he very promising, I know, if it gets too late, you know.
I mean, you get, you run out of time pretty quick, I suppose, two months maybe, or?
Well, depends on how bad, how much snow, or how, how bad the frost, I mean, it can be done, obviously, but, you know, again, that's.
Doing it offsite like that, it'd go pretty quick, and once he gets the material here, just pull the old out, put the new in.
Yeah, all it is, is get those built and bring them in, you know, it wouldn't take that long to get it all done, technically, I think. Cause it's not poured in place, so, you know, you set them in and you put them together and you set them in, as long as you can do the digging and get the undercut and everything, I mean, that, that would go.
To get that done in a couple of weeks, easily?
Yeah, I mean, technically, it'd go pretty fast.
Yeah.
So. Um, this infrastructure deal with township bridges and culverts, we got a little look up, trying to get the app downloaded, I just talked to Sherri, and she's gonna try to do a little model for the district, trying to get the information. We gotta go through some steps to get some, uh, uh, stuff for downloading the state app, so that we can put it on. The tablet right away and send it to the state, this app, we gotta get the state for these, to put on the map, so. She's gonna try to find one out, otherwise, it's just a couple of things to go over and then get that out, put on, and we're gonna start going around as soon as we can on that, then instead of doing the inventory. Probably be, Tammy and I will be going on, probably doing it to start with, and I don't know if later on, I have Mark, I'll be too, but. We got law expenses out there and.
And they, they get a lot of tablets, so they can put all the information on there, so that's all that, that's in there is just what they're working.
So I got a tower.
Or something like that.
So I got a tablet that I had applied for, best applied for this, so then it'll be the highways, and this can be used all the way through the future, you know, and all that inventory, so everything, and we. And we gotta take all these pictures and all this inventory and all this data, so each one, so we gotta have something. If we were gonna use my phone, iPhone, or her iPhone, she had a tablet that had been worked, so I'm trying to get down and said, just go buy one, or kick it out of the infrastructure money.
Yeah, I'd say, it's like taking a rate out of.
Cause they, yeah, cause they gotta have it.
Yeah, I would say so, yeah.
So, got that in there for details today, actually, the first one I got, it wasn't charged, so I actually had you off of it and get it. The second time you get one that works, so this one worked, but we gotta get that stuff down.
Yeah, okay.
So that's all on that, um, I wanted to get a little information, we're working on the scraper, um, cause these are asked about, you guys have talked about, maybe might even. Turn that scraper over to landfill for acid or not, or whatever, but, um, I got BMI out there last week, Kim and I worked on it on Thursday. And we got both engines running good, but there's two stone lanes that need to be, um, changed on it. But the problem is, the front tire on the driver's side is completely shot and been flat for many years, and we got all the rest of the tires up. And a used tire is twenty-eight hundred dollars right now, if we have. And the only other option is, you know, tend to one from twin, about twenty-eight hundred, and here's the kicker, because even though we got a twenty-eight hundred dollar less tire on it. We have to get that on so that we can run and drive it around to see what is causing the heat up on the pad cam. We took the axles out and we found out the axles weren't in right, so me and this other guy changed those, and then we got everything done and ready to go, but. We gotta have a tire on it, so we could drive it around and see if our differential's bad, or what was causing the problem when we did put it away last time. We were getting issues with one side heating up, and we don't know where it was caused from, and then tell them to get a tire put on it. So that we could drive it around and get, and find out what the problem was back there, we're at Sandstone. The only other option that I could give you is, uh, Grant County's selling their old scraper, and you do have one used tire on the option, that's right, so if somebody wanted to do that, get on it. And see if you can get it for under two thousand bucks, that'd be the only thing, there is gonna be other contractors looking at buying that and looking at buying that tire too, so. I don't know if it's gonna go much deeper.
Twenty hundred bucks, would that install them, or?
No.
Oh, cause even if it's a big tire, then you still have to have twin belly tire, make it up, all the back, or install it.
Or down, and still cost you a couple hundred bucks.
Twenty-eight hundred includes that?
No.
No.
Oh, so much more.
Well, that'd be another hundred, two hundred, two hundred bucks, at least, I mean, no one can call us, they have, it comes on if they, they own enough system, and system guy comes and does it from town, it's a little rusty, but.
Of course, they're all busy doing farm tires, right, coming, boys.
Yeah, if you put a tire up, you can add it down already, but I don't know how much it would earn us down, usually, I'm like, oh, man, I said, I don't know if I wanna. I have to bring this up first before I go buy a tire, and then maybe that whole thing is shot in the back end, costs us another two grand to get it then.
He was gonna ask those guys that were out there to bid on, if they had any interest in buying it, then he talked to them, but all being aware.
Excuse me?
He was gonna ask those guys that have been building the cell out there if they had any interest in buying that, to know if he talked.
Oh, I seen Skip, he, I don't think he's interested in buying that, they're ready to move out, or something too.
Yeah, I see, put the black.
He was around these years ago, now he's got the cats, and they're a little different, a little more, you know, bigger scrapers, and, and eye around the ground, different, but anyway, that's what we had, so. Let me know which way you want it.
Is that the right size, that used tire that's coming up on auction?
Yes, exactly the right size, I had Kirkland giving a picture of it, and I called and talked to him, like, you get it before the auction, and said, no, I'm gonna keep it on the auction now, so. We couldn't go down and get it.
We said Grant County is selling this scraper?
Yes, they got it on auction, they're selling their old one, and they're selling this used tire, what, separate, side scraper, cause they bought a new one, yeah, so, from what I heard.
What do you think the scraper would go?
We don't want the scraper, it's a nineteen-seventy, Mars is a nineteen-eighty-eight, ours is a new, yeah. We just want a tire.
Does that one work?
I think just over, I'll get the front engine, but I don't want the back one, and Mars is in good running condition.
Alright, alright.
Can, can you, without driving down there, or if you need to drive down there, know the condition of that tire?
Yeah, he sent me that truck, plus I talked to Chad at Twin Valley, actually went down and looked at it and said, it wasn't really a good tire, it's better.
Well, you can, you can do, you can do a telephone bid, you know. You don't have to physically be there and go through all the rest of their stuff.
Yeah, they do have.
Call me, just give me a call, I'll, I'll bid on it when it's up for auction.
Yeah, I shouldn't, I don't know what the name of the auction is, or any of the details, I don't know. I know it's on Friday, so I can get to the information.
No, what I meant, you. What are you doing on Friday?
Probably more than that.
That wouldn't take more than a half hour, once again.
I don't even know what it's called, I guess.
Cause that, that thing, you know, like I said, months ago, before all the tires are shot, we should either fix it or move it.
Yeah, they were all shot, and we were to put two of these, when it was on last time, we had to run it, and the last time we used it was when we reclaimed down in Walmart, and I did that. And then we brought it back, and it was getting hot on this, and we were, and so, I think, city, that's why it's.
Biser seemed to think he had a use for it, if it was.
Yeah, I know you could use it to.
We need to, once we go down, take a look at that tire then, or?
Cause the tire, I think the tire's a very good tire, and then from what I talked to and what I see, it's a good tire in that good trick, but, uh, it's just, uh. Whether or not you're gonna get it for under two thousand bucks. Sound like some people in summer were interested, according to Kirkland, there's other equipment operators out there looking, because nobody can get good used tires for these.
New one must be five grand or more.
You want to have, you want to have Biser call for that?
She'd be good, yeah.
You want to get that information to Biser then, so he can call on, maybe on Friday, a bid on it, or on the phone, or?
Yeah, we could bring some home. We'll talk to Biser there after the, hopefully.
But then how much money do you put into that thing to make it profitable?
Yeah, man, I would think it'd be worth twenty, thirty thousand anyway, just the way it sits, wouldn't it?
I, I don't know, I have no idea. I mean, you take a guy like.
Crazy, spend three hundred on a new one.
Oh, yeah. Really, would you fix it, just a seller?
Just to get it, see, see how serious it is.
Yeah, we gotta see how serious.
Get it in rolling condition.
I can get an update, and you know, how much it might be, and it, once we find out the problem. Is it in a differential, or it could be on one of, see, it don't have brakes on it, and it costs a fortune to put brakes all the way around it, we've been running it without brakes.
So you just, like a Fred Flintstone, you just drop it on the back, and that's how it stops?
You use the pole to stop, that's all you could, I mean, me and Clinton, me and Clinton built the last.
Yeah.
Clinton and I built that one before the last time, we built that ourselves, me and him, with the doors, and that one scraper, built that all, that one here, it was in two, two years, we built it. We get all the work ourselves back there, we never had brakes on it, nobody's ever put brakes on it.
You're down the road, that's probably.
You don't have to be, uh, one thing, the fire is dangerous, cause when you're doing a sculpt, and you're going like this, and you're following the hole, and you wanna stop all the stuff you're doing, you gotta, and it's.
Drop the scraper down?
It's a little naff to it, so, so, just throwing it out there so you know, cause I mean, Biser, if he's gonna be using it out there, or somebody grabbing it.
Richard, he's not listening.
There's a lot more to it, so, but anyway, like, that's what's going there, so.
Got one without it for all these years, we should just get it in rolling condition.
See, we can get it, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, that Biser, that'd be a start, tire on there, and see if we go from there.
That's all we'll do. I did get a call from Amber again, um, wondering about an update, or any, if you thought anymore about this bridge situation with the two bridges on our inventory on the valley roads. About putting it into. about putting it into ownership to us. Even though we might own it on paper, it would still have to say that they may do all the maintenance. They cannot, they cannot get money down the road in the future, you know, if they need to ever.
I thought we were supportive of that concept if the wording was such that they were responsible for all maintenance today and into the future.
Yeah, we're wrapped.
Okay, cause Cody had talked to her again from the state saying they have to be, you know, still be on our inventory and then the ownership. So I'll have to go and talk to the state's attorneys some more about trying to get it reworded with the upper, you know, watershed district. Or not, or county's wording and they have to be.
Well, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't they supposed to submit the documentation on that?
That's what I thought, yeah. That's what I thought we were at.
She left a phone message yesterday and like, yeah.
I guess the copy of the draft.
We're getting her to work on that. I'll get all of her today and she.
But how do you talk about if they had a project that we were able to get funding for and then we're gonna pick up? That they would put that money in escrow before the project started using it? What happened? They didn't say, oh, we're gonna need money. Well, they were stopped.
And that's exactly what I remember you asking her.
I thought they were supposed to bring some.
We were expected, it was an agreement, a new agreement giving ownership of bridges to Robert County, but having the watershed district be responsible for all expenses.
Yeah, exactly.
From our mint.
And that's what it was.
It's our bridge. I suppose you could put a toll on that thing, couldn't you?
There we go.
Money, toll, toll. Sure, why not? Drop a $5 bill in there and the arm comes up.
Yep. Another five bucks to get back the other way.
I'll stand up to it with an umbrella over my head, back to five dollars. He did a lot of traffic on that one road.
Okay, so the only other thing I have is, um, we were talking about if you were to order a new pickup right now, it takes six or eight months to get one. If you order it within the next week. And they told me they're gonna shut down the Ford dealership too. They already shut down the Chevy dealership. So first of all, I was looking at a Chevy and I wanted to see if I could deal one of them order. They said, no, that, they already shut down and you cannot deal one from 23 if you ordered it now.
20.
And then I said, well, what about, you know, before here? And they said, yeah, they still can do it within the next two weeks, which I would not wait till next week. But I can still get the F250, like the one we got two years back with the crew cab and everything, the car on. And they said, you can still order one of them, but it would take eight, six, eight, five months to get that one in 2022. It might be a 2023 and 22, they don't know that, but you can order it now. But you cannot order any, if you wait in the lottery, as they say, they're shutting down the Ford dealership. So you can go down, find the, they went on a lot, maybe.
Probably electric one.
True. Go out and buy.
They had on the news that there's 150,000 back ordered for electric ones.
So that's a long piece. I wanted to bring it to your attention because, you know, that's, you're looking at eight months and not more. You have to order one and be like, mine's 145,000.
Did they have a good price on them?
Yeah, this is statement price for all these.
What is?
This would be, uh, it was 33,469 and then the options, there was two options. They wanted to get the vinyl seal instead of the hock. This time it was on the box. And then there was two switches that are already ingrained in there for 255 dollars. So technically around 34,000, you trade the whole thing for 34,000 dollars.
And that's 250, is it?
Yeah, four, three quarters on 400. So, uh, 34,000 will cover that whole thing. So we'd either have to go drive out to the vendors to get it or whatever. But I mean, that's the situation too, you know, the pickup situation. If we're gonna look at one for us or for anybody else in the county.
Is there anything you have to do to it once we get it?
Uh, we just put lights on and ourselves and that type of thing, you know, then the side stuff. Do a couple of some cheap ones, but. Otherwise, yeah, it's a complete package. And it has the tow package. It has everything on, on the statement. It's these out. Everybody getting back stuff and then the cones, it's all there and what you need. Wanted to bring it to your attention so you know, we have this stuff checking good next year.
You should probably get one coming then.
I think so.
Cause otherwise they just send you a form and we sign it. I find I sign it, date it and then I send it back over. And then they'll already get it going. So that's how we did the last. I mean, that's just, I mean, you're not gonna fucking win that a lot for 4,000 dollars. Where are you going? For more.
And actually you couldn't even buy a decent used one for that kind of money.
No, you can't.
Used got so expensive.
That's not the, the winner motor. It's a V8, um, 62 V8, that's the other one. If you wanted matches and getting like, you know, you can get the diesels or you can get the set of three gas. And we had on everything like that. I mean, we got plenty of power for their six still V8.
400 plus horsepower.
It's less than. So the gas and the diesel, so we have all of the diesel because there's so much. So I just wanted to.
I'm selling a field for the paint and so forth. Do we have that or has this been done?
That's all done. That's, that was for the striping and all it's just.
So it is all done?
It's all done, but we had done, yes. And that was like $500, we don't really get one. We got down, we got a lot of the acid. So it takes more paint, but we're only getting those minimum miles in the back without going anywhere. And that's because, you know, they didn't have a dent for the state to help us out on a next year. Go get back to where we.
Saw an article on TV here. They were talking about that painting and it just create big rocks for, you know, doing brand new projects and they have no, no lines to put down, no paint. And the island was, was it the state of this or South Florida or Amherst State?
Well, it all come out of Texas and they had all that. From.
Spoiled, yeah.
And then that showed everybody down the side, it's cold and then everything just went on the wayside. You can't get nothing for nothing anymore.
No, you can't. Someone told me that Costco is limiting toilet paper again because they think it's gonna run out of toilet paper.
So. Yeah.
And then, then they showed a picture of all the parties stacked up outside of, uh, La Beach.
Of course.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thousands of hundreds of dollars.
It won't let them in.
Don't worry about, not that, don't worry about.
Yeah, and those trucks, all of them wasn't getting one.
That's the same it was for getting that equipment. They would sit on there on those ships and they couldn't get them to die.
It's just crazy.
That's what happened today, I guess.
What's the board want to do? You want to get a new pickup coming?
I think so.
Take a half a year or longer for it to arrive.
Well, next spring, I'd like to, um, our, uh, to, uh, on surplus, I want to give them at least one or two of them over. That helps cost us a fortune and then two trucks for sure to put on, uh, surplus next year, next spring. So we'll have at least that and that old John Deere tractor more, send out the trees, that transmission's out. I want to get all that and put it on surplus next spring. If not, that's all. And what I want to do is put it on Purple Wave and what it is, is it's obviously follows Purple Wave. You have them come and they'll do it all and they'll document it all, take pictures and put it on their Purple Wave and then the occupation plan, you spend it real clean. They're not more money and not more bids, I would say. And so that's what I want to do with our surplus that we have in the future. And it doesn't cost us. It costs the buyer to pay for the, to pay for the cost of the sound fee. So it doesn't cost us, you know, and it's pretty neat deal and get it out there. So we need to get rid of these, these pickups.
Yeah, there's no reason to.
Stuff that's, you know, costing us for too many bucks.
We're talking about the shop out there, you know, what we hope to be able to do with replacing that thing. And we've asked Holden on several occasions to come on, take a look at that and give some idea what the elevation did and how he, he thought he could rectify by running an open trench off the back and running that water something. So we never really gave it to him. Did Clark come and look at that at one point in time too or?
Uh, yeah, we never got any information yet, but, uh, they do have other people too that will do stuff for designing and building.
Should we ask someone else to take a look?
I don't know how much it would cost, but I don't have that money, my budget for doing stuff for it.
Well, I mean, if, if it's that kind of thing, they could come out of that COVID money, right? To be in the engineering part of it or whatever. If we want to move forward on this thing, we, we don't get something going now. It's gonna be two years on the road before we get anything. I think we get it next year, you know. Do you want to have someone else come and take a look at it or?
Get some more information and get some more there.
Did, did Clark actually shoot elevations with the transit?
Yep, went around, did them. I just haven't got it back. He's got all the elevation shots on. I paid for some, I mean, knocks.
Can you call him and ask him for a rip, rip report on that? And then Brandon hasn't got back to me yet, but it wasn't out of the question that he'd be willing to sell a little more property to, to the west of there?
Cause I did talk to Brandon. He didn't want to want anyone on this property if we did out for the building and pop it right away.
But see what, when I was there talking to Holden that time, he said that a lot of land that would butt up to a red, it's kind of wetland anyhow, so that might be agency of it.
It is.
He means something like he gives a, a small open trench and runs the water and sort of direct it over towards the jail or something. Does that make sense? And you drain all that water off there and just don't get it back in that direction.
Cause that's the way it is now on the back side, but the front side, you know, half through the, the middle of our yard goes straight over to the number. So the rest of it does drain around the south and to the back, so. And that could all be drained out easily.
You can landscape around and you start to sell that where you want.
Yeah, right.
Is that the kind of thing where that Clark can figure all that out first and Clark can figure the best place to put a building and that kind of stuff? Is it within their Bailey Wick or not?
Cause when we get measurements for whatever, you know, you're gonna be limited to where you can go with it because of the, you know, because of the highway and highway 700 and all coast and that.
But if we could pick up some land behind that.
It's either gonna have to be salt or it's gonna have to be.
The other part, you should always have them come and talk to us because if, if we only can build part of it out of paint, that might, not those, not the old, example, that might change where the building, where you start building.
Sure, there's a lot of unanswered questions that we don't even know.
Cause we already measured from our offices and our main shop all the way out to 700. You won't even have enough room to build there where it is now.
Oh, no, no, no. I think we should talk to the back.
It either has to be the salt.
Well, it's, you know, if we built the whole thing in a certain spot, we could get rid of the old building or that. But if we can't, we only build the new part in second pieces, then if you're gonna drain down the old part, well, now we can't build it there because the old building is still going.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't put anything, we need to, at least so that we can take down the old building, whatever, whatever required. There's not that many stuff that gets stored in there that, that needed heat. We talked about just going to Twin Valley Tire for the tire work and, and I talked to Jamie that time. He said, yeah, he'd put an inventory here to have special, extra rigs that are already mounted. Tires and just swap them up, you know.
We already have that inventory and have wires already there ready and be no problem. They're always.
And give us a fire.
When we needed it.
Yep.
Chad said that to me too. So I had to investigate that a lot, so that's not a problem. So, uh, you better be careful.
Yeah, maybe put a feather under their, well, nevermind. But, uh, yeah, we should get them working on something. We're not moving on this. We're not gonna do anything. All right. But in terms of Clark engineering, I think they could come out of, only we have Alex here for that, so.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
We should have a motion for authorization to put that order in for this.
Yeah.
By Carlson, second, with Ergel. Any discussion? All in favor of seeing if others say, uh, I, I'm curious.
You just mess by color or they just get whatever they get or?
Uh, there's four different colors. It's gonna be a lot like metallic blue and kind of those blue.
Yeah, I was just curious if you actually get them.
Well, I didn't really want clear range and red and I didn't want like silver, so I think it's all.
Well, silver stays clean a long time.
Yeah, silver's kind of nice too, but I don't know. We don't wash them as much as we should already.
I mean, see, uh. Oh, Pat, one other thing. I was gonna ask him about that CGO with that bill.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. There you go. Hell, yes, I do. Hell, yes, I saw. It's an older one there. Yeah, I hope so.
$4,000 for font seal. I phoned out from Marshall County this morning. They're gonna have to bill us and then we'll have to pay them and then we'll have to get reimbursed when I get that added on to our whole CGO project. But that was verbally on the phone this morning. I didn't wait for the bill, but he said it'd be around $4,000. I do have pictures of it all.
Our expense was only four grand, yeah?
Yeah, it was only a mile. I mean, it was like five tons of.
And they, and they wanted us to pay about 14,000 to the contractor.
Yeah, that was with everything.
That's our labor and materials.
Labor and materials and the check seal and everything. And, uh, that would have been all in there for 13,500 bucks. So we'll get ours together, what it costs us, get that font seal on the bill and then I'll show you what it is.
Okay.
I'll look at the contracts I got, I don't know what the percentage is.
Seventy-five percent.
I have to look at it.
But they agreed to pay. Do you have those number sheets for us next week too?
Yep, once we get the final, uh, I'm in, um, seven for this month, I'm running Tuesday. And hopefully all the biggest bills are done right now for the, for the most part.
Are you still getting blacktop or no?
Uh, today's the last day and then we're gonna be doing just paddles. So we got the biggest bill there today and we got about $30,000 outstanding after today for blacktop. And then Tuesday we get over and we should have everything pretty much up today and right next Tuesday. And then hopefully if we don't have any bigger bills, because it was around 130,000 last month for bills. But this month was 188,000, so. And then we'll get the rest of that paid up. Uh, should be pretty good. Um, I got salt sand, could be ordering through what the state bid is. So that was cheaper, cheaper. And we get a couple of loans here this next month and then we'll mix these salts in. We're not, we're not really need much because we're gonna mix the rolls. So yeah, we'll get that figured out next Tuesday. Hopefully all the biggest bills should be done except for. Hopefully no big ones on trucks or anything.
Yeah. But you know, right.
Is that the golden rank about 4,000 a mile for chip and seal?
I don't know. It's, I know the oil is a bit expensive there. I, I don't, I didn't think it was that much. I thought, uh.
So.
I don't even know. I have his original software. But that's chip and seal and font, right?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, that seems high, I don't know. My eyes and blindies. We said, then what the state has gonna.
They did, no. About 14 grand for our share.
I think the rest of those numbers were way up.
Marshall County's share I think was about 75,000.
Do you have a question? What was to do with that?
Well, then all it did is show the little device itself. Didn't talk about what?
What are you talking about? Did it came off or?
Oh, I caught on that. That's all square.
I figured out, you said, didn't you get an email from him? He has my rock email address is wrong.
Oh, yes.
That's why I didn't get anything from it.
Oh, maybe I gave it to him wrong then. I must have, because I gave it to.
Why is he asking, what's, what's she, the share link coming?
Yes, she does.
Because I think because in the past we did something extra for him and his wife during their loss that we should maybe do for somebody else. So our policy says.
Read, read, read.
One day.
And, and her grandfather, not father.
Oh.
Yeah, it was her, her grandfather.
So what was that? Why are you asking?
Yeah, I, I didn't understand. So that's why I called on. Uh, the budget today, are we going over that at all today or is it just like done or?
We're in frame one.
Yeah, the final, is it today?
What you gave us, this top sheet provisional and then annual, is that, is that what?
The annual is today.
I guess, you factored in the wage increase.
I had one question with regard, I guess it will affect the budget. I don't know if we need to be in executive session about this, it's about holidays and likes, or we need to be in executive for that or?
You can do the holidays, we can do that towards the end of the year and decide the holidays, is that what you're?
Well, no, we talked about the possibility that having an extra holiday in there. That's gonna affect the budget because it's gonna add four or five thousand dollars in the jail expenses if we decided to do that. One of the things we, well, when we first talked about it was, what was this, Juneteenth, what became a national holiday in the state holiday, we did nothing. Then we thought maybe we would look at giving them a day after Thanksgiving, is that correct? Are we interested in doing that? If we are, I mean, we need to figure that out before we find, find the budget, so that's expensive now to jail.
Maybe a budget thing in it, who else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Talk about that at some point.
So there's no budget? Is that what you wanna do now?
Well, I don't think, I suppose I can, but I just. At some point time, there's a couple of things I have questions on that, I hope we can be in executive session. Maybe, maybe wait till afterwards. I want to tell you this, extra holiday thing we talked about, maybe increase for deductibles and the word squared away on this salary. Maybe we should just go into executive session over at the end of the.
Tyler might have something for post session as well. See if he's got something and then.
Sure.
Take it when he, he gets done.
All the stuff that you've given us previously on this project, go away, right?
Yeah, plus you wanna keep the provisional stuff, but I have all that here, so you might need provisional. Well, we gave you for provisionals, if you wanna compare or something, but.
You wanna talk about that now, before Tyler gets here?
So I just did the comparison with fifty cents. What we had decided on provisional first and just fifty cent increase instead. So that's what that sheet is, just to show you the differences. Let me just report. Um, let's see, what do you, so I guess that's what we did and then we also added the extra on the public defender.
Did you have a thought that I get the budget, uh, no, his response, I was just saying the best. His hard and fast number. Can't be better than that.
But maybe we could increase the rent next year.
And when I, when I asked about, about just eliminating the rent and some considerations, he said, no, I'd rather pay rent.
But we're advertising, right?
Mm-hmm. And it's open next week. I've only gotten Robert's bid. It's gonna be closed Friday.
Next.
This Friday.
I can't imagine what they're gonna do.
They make more of being a point of attorney.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah. Was it ninety-five bucks for point of origin?
Yeah, I'm not sure we increased. My, those, um. Basically the shit right, it's a change of due to the fifty.
To fifty cents and then on the public defender. And then the whole time for public, for planning. Planning and zoning. And then on the state's attorney, that was the, um, the increase also. Plus we added like that forty-five hundred dollars that we have to pay every year for five years for that rural attorney thing.
Oh, sure, yeah.
We didn't have that in his budget.
Okay.
For there. So that's.
And the deputy?
Deputies?
State's attorney. Art, uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's in there. That was previously in there, so this is just the increase.
Yeah. Dispatchers, I, we still left, I think Janessa's still in there, so, you know.
As a contract employee?
Yeah, so, um, I think we've got everybody covered. I guess the only question that was asked to me today was on Kim's salary, if we were gonna take it. We've put it all on their planning and zoning just cause it's easier for Christie when she does. And the question was, well, yeah, but she's only doing planning and zoning half time and assessors the other half. So do you wanna split it between the two or just leave it in the planning and zoning budget?
I don't know that it would be fifty-fifty though.
Would it?
I mean, I.
I think she can do more zoning though, too, than, than the other, you know. In the summertime, I probably had a, well, if you're busy or heck, zoning can show us money to use around one of the teams to go out, so I don't know. But that's why I think that she needs some ability to say, I can't go out on a team because I got zoning stuff I gotta do and. She needs some authority to be able to say, to share either, I'm looking for you right now, but I have this job that I have to do first. Then I got time available on the wall with you.
But right now we've just put Kim in planning and zoning only, so I guess.
I think you can hump it all together. I don't know, you guys are the numbers people better than me.
I think our state auditor wants, wants to see, you're not, you're not saying combine planning and zoning with equalization.
Just separating her wages between the two budgets.
Yeah, cause that's how, it makes more sense from a common standpoint to do it that way.
I think as long as we have the planning and zoning budget.
I think so too. Why am I seeing highway departments, I should be increased difference, they're under the difference, what was that?
I think that was, um, also just the, um, employees, you know, we, we made sure there was. Not the, not just as actual employee, but there's also new hire in, in that column also.
Oh, so that number may.
Yeah.
You may not.
Right, so that way that's there, although, you know.
A hundred and thirty-eight thousand is up.
So you get two employees.
Really?
Because the fifty cent increase.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay.
I mean, I just thought that's a huge number.
And we have three new hires listed under the highway.
He wants three new ones.
Well.
That's what you would, to get up the full staff.
It's always been on here if he's, if he's full staff.
But you sell them, sell them to staff that way.
That just has, we haven't had any. So that's where, yeah, that's a good question, I kinda look at that too, so.
Dispatch thing is basically that increase plus the contract?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
So do you have any more questions on the expenditure side? And then on the revenue side, um, our property taxes, we had a one point.
Separate sheet on revenue?
Or it's the batch, isn't it?
Well, I do have it on the bottom here.
Okay.
What are you looking at?
The property taxes. So then that was an increase of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Although from last year it was like closer to ninety thousand, but we had figured it in the, you know, we always do an estimate in the provisional. And then the cash applied, of course, is gonna change also.
I guess I think they talked about salary, but again, in close to our session, but it would come back to this by only a small amount.
I mean, cause we, it's gotta be finalized today in these changes. Have the changes in the minutes. Some of the county auditors, cause it sounds like every county's kinda going through this and where they're going to be increasing their salaries. And a lot of them are talking about republishing the whole annual budget. It's like, why? We, all we have to do is put the changes in the minutes.
Yeah.
So I couldn't quite figure out where some of the auditors were coming from, cause they said it's gonna cost a lot more. It's like, I don't know, it's not in the, you know, we leave minutes every week, so we don't. And our. Our levy will be two point seven zero eight for the general fund and the jail bond would be point three five four.
So what's that? That's a combination of rules and, uh, CBI? And what was that, the point eight jail bond?
Point three five four, so the total would be three point zero sixty-two for the county. And in two thousand, what we're in currently is three point one by eight. So the jail bond went down and you sold it to the general. And the jail bond, we, we go according to the amortization schedule, what we all refer to speak and.
Like twenty-five years left, or is that getting close to the end?
Getting close, um, I'll be gone before it is, but it's close. So I think it's twenty five. I don't know. Any other questions that you have? At this point?
Just that one, but I think I go to the executive session, but I would not wait.
I just wanna do it now and then just tell Tyler to come on in when you get that swing, make use of that time.
Okay, I'll just go into executive session and talk.
In the minutes. There's a motion for executive session by Carlson to discuss personnel for a second. By Ergel. All in favor, I'm just saying that.
Aye.
She carries.
I got it.
Alright.
And it was probably me, cause he was asking for the emails for all you guys and I'm, I'm sure it was mine here, so.
Our census this morning, uh, is eighty. Uh, you can see it crept down a little bit last, at the end of last week, down to, uh, all sixty-five and then throughout the weekend and, and whatnot, we prepped that up. We're still at fifteen US Marshal service inmates, thirty-six, sorry, thirty-seven, uh, Roberts County inmates. We're making things, we're making things work.
We never had any capacity there, aren't you?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Today's, today's fourth day, you know, it tends to be what happens is by Tuesday, um, we do start to have a few extra. They're hanging on until they, if they don't get a bond set over the weekend or on Monday, it's because they're waiting to see the judge on, on Tuesday morning. So, um, and you'll see a, usually a pretty decent sized drop after, by the end of today, today. That's why the slightly, the slightly higher numbers. Uh, one of the, the old business things from, from last week, we talked about cars. I'm still, still waiting to get, get more information back. Dennis did send me the landlord's guy's information and I know that, that, uh, Deputy Lesnar reached out to him and was gonna get some numbers from him. I just, I haven't had a chance to reconnect with him.
Did you take it?
Was that an inventory?
Uh, I mean, to get everybody else caught up, I had noticed that there was a, a police pursuit for an explorer on, on landlord's website. So I sent a message to Tyler, they were following. I really couldn't tell if it was on inventory, it kinda looked like it was.
That was my, that was my understanding and I sent him the, I sent him the same, uh, deputy level of the same thing, so guys are gonna take a look at it.
Okay.
What, if I'm repeating myself a little bit from, from last week, I mean, our understanding, looking at the country is it's gonna be very difficult to get pickups. We might have a, we might be okay. It sounds like we have a Tahoe waiting for us that's on, on standby, we just need to, we'll just need to make a final decision and say, yes, that's what we're gonna go with. Uh, for at least, uh, we talked about doing a deal in the budget cycle. We'll have to make that decision probably soon, cause they're, they're flying out the doors. I think, I don't know, if, if you've been out of town and you drive by car lots, they, they look like deserts. Uh, there's just not much on inventory anymore and I think everybody's getting worried that that's what's gonna happen to patrol vehicles. So he is, he is looking for that, what that second option would be, if we're able to find another Tahoe, um, or the Explorer at the landlords. Or if we do need to look at a, at a Charger or something like that. So, so I don't know if we wanna make a decision on the Tahoe, if you want me to give you all, get all the numbers for you for next week and then, and then.
What, what was the price on that?
Thirty-seven.
Just gotta wait in line for the pickup site recently as well.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that ultimately probably gives us, uh, some better options out on the road. Um, better options for carrying our, our equipment, uh, as well as, you know, when they switched over to pickups, they started using the single cage system in those. Personally, I don't, I don't care for it. A lot of times we're dealing with more than one subject at the time. Uh, and I think it'll, it'll be better suited for them on the road doing that. And that's what it sounds like some of the deputies are kind of leaning towards, probably being the better, better options for them too, so.
What are your thoughts on the car, like, like a charger, an all wheel drive?
Uh. I think they're, I think they're, they have their place. It's going to be like anything, as soon as you have a, as soon as you're out doing something and you're in a pickup, you're wishing you had a car and as soon as you're out in a car and somebody takes off through a cornfield, you're going to wish you had a pickup. You know, but I think, I think with us, you know, waiting to hear back on, you know, with us looking at our, our future contract obligations with Rosal, you know, and, you know, the potential of starting hearing back on our cops grants. You know, if we're going to be spending some more time doing residential patrolling and things like that, I think those are really good fits, really good fits for that. Because those, those officers in particular are going to be more stationed, stationed inside city limits and or going to, you know, leaving those, those areas to go out on, on a call and then coming back and going back to what it was that they were doing. They're not going to be out on just standard patrol. So I, I think they could, I think it'd be a good fit for us to, to have some of those options out on the road here.
I thought of a personal experience with an all wheel drive vehicle my wife had. And then, you know, if it's snowing and you're in, in Sioux Falls or something and you're driving home, it's snowing, it accumulates an inch or two or three, it's not a big deal. I wouldn't want to go out six inches of snow because the bottom would be dry. And, and I, I wonder if like, like if you're deputy or out in the country, it's snowing all night, you get a call, if the finger drifts and stuff like that, how effective that thing would be?
Well, and that may be, and that may be where we have those options. You know, we have, we have our, our other high patrol Tahoe that, that we purchased this year. We have that as one of our spare vehicles. It would be one of those things where, you know, in a snowstorm situation, we're dealing with weather conditions, they're able to get to the office and get to a vehicle that has a higher profile and use it in those situations, so.
I know you were supposed to spend, he drives a charger, right? Does he have any issues with that?
They, they carry scoop shovels in the back of their pickup, or back of their cars. Because when, when they get stuck, they get out and they start shoveling until they can get going again. So. You know, that's obviously why, you know, they're still doing the eight cylinder charters, but they're only rear wheel, rear wheel drive. That's just not, not, not for, for what we could, not practical for us.
That's correct.
Yeah. It's a summer, it's a summer car. So I will get the, I will get the, have him get the file numbers for, for the Tahoe all put together with the outfitting costs and all that and I'll present that at next week's meeting. And then I'll also have, get together something for twenty, twenty-two's vehicle. Because we should probably, we can kind of sign some sort of agreement with them that we're purchasing the vehicle so that we don't not get one. That probably puts us in a better.
We approved a pickup for the highway department and he's six to eight months out. And then you can find out if that Explorer is in fact available or not available or.
I will.
Whatever, whatever the price is.
Whether they're available. We could, we could.
Four like that or jump.
I think we need to look at that as an option. The, the thing that, that I'm worried about is some of them are probably past that mileage or more than some people would even consider. I don't know. You know, if we can get, the one thing is, is the one thing nice about pickups is pickups have pretty good resale value. You know, for a pickup that, all of ours are going to be, our oldest pickup is the Ford, I think it's a twenty nineteen. And I want to say it's probably around a hundred and forty thousand miles. Under two hundred thousand miles, you know, we might be able to get decent resale value out of it.
As you mentioned, contracts with highest value, we have written contracts or?
Right now, we do not. We, we have. The reason that we don't is because with our, our cop grants waiting to go through with the, with the government, you can't already have a position established when you're applying for that, for that money. So we kind of established, you know, a short term kind of handshake deal on providing them with some services and then invoicing them the, the costs. And do it that way so that we're not saying that we have established a full-time officer in that, in that area. So, and we should hear, we're expected to hear, I would say in the next couple of weeks, the federal government starts their budget year, hopefully we're, we're going to be there. And then also working with, I had some contact with Janessa over the, over the weekend. And she passed over a grant that she was writing over in Traverse County. It is for the north, northern region of the United States. So we're going to be working with her and she's going to be showing somebody at our office how to, how to write this grant. She says it's a really easy grant to write. And there was a pretty long list of things that they could write for technology equipment for our, for policing, but technology equipment for our police officers. We might be able to get away with getting some of the costs for our, our vehicle, some of the equipment.
Jim had sent us this, have you covered any of the tech systems he was talking about or the cameras or anything?
Uh, for the, not, not for this because this is jail related.
Okay, so like how do we see that?
Right. One of, the last thing I have as far as new business is when I was out with the Sheriff's Association, I met with a vendor out there called Precision Kiosk Technologies. They are a, a South Dakota based company that does, works with twenty-four seven programs. And what this is, is, I'll pass this around so you can see kind of what we're saying. It's a kiosk system that we can log all of our out of custody people into that have to come into the jail for some sort of checking in. Twenty-four seven program, anybody on the twenty-four seven program comes in twice a day, morning to night, between six-thirty and eight o'clock AM and six-thirty and eight o'clock PM. They do their PBTs and, and so on. This system allows us to put all of their metrics into that system and them to not need an individual to be there for them to PBT work. Now. The cost of it is one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars a month. A month. If you, I, I know it sounds like a lot until you figure out how much we already take in through our twenty-four seven program. Our twenty-four seven program, somebody who comes in to PBT, they PBT twice a day at a dollar a time. So it's two dollars, two dollars a day. Right now, we're servicing thirty-eight just on the twenty-four seven program. Okay, that's seventy-six dollars a day, two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars a month. So it would actually, it would actually, we'd actually be making about nine hundred and thirty dollars a month. Not even somebody to be at the office. So one of the things that I was, that I would do is if we implemented this, this system, is we would change our twenty-four seven office hour windows that used to be normal business hours. So we would cut out anybody officing in the front office of our building from six-thirty to eight and six, probably five o'clock at nine till eight, which we're servicing now.
So maybe five hours a day?
Yeah, five hours less a day, but we're going to have to have somebody at the office here at the front office. Now. This, this company is, currently has, I think, three key, three of these kiosks in Conneaton County. They have in, they have in, I think it says on there, twenty-five counties in South Dakota. They got implemented in a lot of these places because of COVID, because now they don't need to have anybody, anybody holding a PBT like we do currently, holding a PBT as somebody's blowing it right in front of them. The, the system works by fingerprint. They come in, they put their fingerprint into the system, all of their information comes up. There's a, a straw just like a, when you put in a can of pop or whatever, they blow, put that into the machine, they blow into it, they get a receipt showing that they either pass and they get to leave or that they need to have a seat if they prove something hot on their, on their. And in which case a jailer would come up, talk with them. And then it would send a message, it would cook into our technology and, and all of that. All of that system. The, I had them put together, I had them put together a contract just so that you could kind of see what it would, what it would look like. I didn't print out a whole bunch of them, I don't want to waste all the paper, but.
So this includes the testing draws?
Yep.
Okay.
And right now, right now, we pay seventeen cents a, a PBT tube.
How, how does a person pay the dollar per time? Who do they pay that?
We set it. We can, I can set that.
Oh, if, if we don't have a person physically there to collect the money.
So there's a, there's a bill collector down here.
Okay.
So they can put cash in the machine or they can slide a card.
Oh, good, because it's going to be ready for charging.
They're going to need no more charging. They're going to have to pay every time. That was, I, I knew that, I want to bring that up, that was one thing I knew of it.
Does it work if someone doesn't show up?
When it doesn't, when somebody doesn't show up, it prints off, prints us off a report at the end of the day and we would know and we would just submit that to the court and say so-and-so has insured for their PBT. There's also a camera on it that takes a photo as their PBT, so we know who it is. Another potential thing that we can use this for is to get our court services to start using the facility for their check-ins as well. Because then they could start, we could start providing them that service and it doesn't tape us anybody to do it. They come out, they do their regular check-ins, they pay whatever fee it is that they need to pay and we're not increasing our staff size at all. In fact, like I said, we'll be able to decrease our hours upfront pretty substantially. Five hours, five hours a day.
Where's the court services members, you don't know?
They have to meet with them in person. You know, and for those, for their maybe more high risk.
Maybe they may, maybe they need to be subject to fees.
Well, and then that's what, we can set all that.
What are you saying from court services?
Are these cases true?
Yeah.
Besides there, that person putting their two dollars in.
Yep, and that's, it's something.
Court services.
Uh, they do it free in there. They're, like anybody that comes in on the parole services, UAs and things like that, you can put all of those in there as well. So, and the way that that would happen is they would come in, they would put their information in, they would pay, right, right there, they'd have to pay. And it would print them off a receipt giving them instructions of what to do. So they would provide the jailer with the receipt, the jailer would know that they paid for their cup for that day, it would give them their year analysis and we would do the testing and whatever, but they would have already paid for those.
So, but, so we have a jailer that is pretty happy?
Which we do now. Which, if, if anytime that, anytime that somebody comes out for parole services or for court services or based on the judge's conditions, that they come out to provide a year analysis for us for testing, which usually happens twice a week. We have twenty-seven people doing that right now. It's all a fair number.
Are we paying?
So yeah, we, yeah, we collect a fee for that. I think it's, I don't know, three dollars a, three dollars a test. And we run into that same thing, you know, for, for some of those people that don't, that start to rack up, you know, even if it's a seven dollar, eight dollar bill, but then all of a sudden something happens and then they go, you know, see them for, for a while. Now we're stuck with those. This will alleviate a lot of that problem. Now our front office isn't dealing with cash, cards or, or any of that.
One concern I have is, is how damage proof this thing is. I can just see people coming in, maybe he knows he's going to go hot, so he tries to screw up the machine and says, I took my test, your machine screwed up, blah, 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 blah. But maybe that's taken care of because of cameras there, right?
Well, we would, if, if we put it right in the front lobby, we would have a camera on the machine.
We'd have, oh, so we have one of our cameras in the mall, so if someone messed it up, we could see that.
Yes. You know, and I know one of the, one of the, the, I talked with, after finding out that it was in Conneaton, I talked with the Conneaton County Sheriff and he said that, yeah, we've had people try to fool it before and somebody's standing on their knee or on their knees while someone's, so they can see their face. And it, they caught, it catches those.
Yes, I forget any of us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, and this was one of those things that during COVID that they used to prevent people from having, having contact with each other. So. The thing for me was, was the, was the cost and I think they, they had figured out that if you had thirty-two people that were using the program, it would pay for itself. And we have thirty-eight on, on daily, twice daily check-ins. We have two on just, they have to come in and just do a check-in every day. Now we don't need somebody there to do that, they can just scan your computer and be there. We have twenty-seven on UA, on twice weekly UAs and we have twelve that UA for us for parole services.
That calibration canister that they talk about, is, is there extra fees that go along?
They, they, with the, on the last page, it says that with the agreement, they send the first two and then we pay for the, the ones after that. The, the same toxin-ureate type canisters we currently purchase for our calibration of our PBT tubes. And then they take care of, they take care of everything with the machine. If there's ever an issue with the machine, they come down and that's part of their service agreement.
Where are they located?
Uh. Uh, E-Dana. Uh, but they have a service, their, their kiosk here.
Something to be happy, mildly, is that?
Nope, that's all, that's all in there. They are, if anybody is interested, they are planning on coming down this Thursday or Friday, I just gave you background. And to bring one of these and to do a demonstration on, on how it works. If anybody's available, I can try to schedule around the time that works for somebody to take a look at it. And then we can put it on the, on the table for next week.
Give me a heads up if they're coming, if I can make it all.
I saw it on Friday and really liked you a lot.
They, when, when talking with him and talking with some of the other sheriffs who are using it, they have nothing but good things to say, to say about it. The, uh. The technology in the machine allows us a lot of capabilities as far as questions that we ask and monitoring those people that are out of custody. So I think long-term it creates some good options for us to hopefully use that in some ways that can make deep. It can maybe decrease our jail population is because people are gonna be, we're able to use this for more of that monitoring, that monitoring factor.
I think it's worth looking at.
That, and that's, that was the. Uh, the other thing that it would allow us to do, I know for some people that, that come in, you know, if they're having to get to work in the morning or work in the evening, our times are, can be somewhat limited. You know, 6:30 to 8:00 and then 6:30 at night till 8:00. This would allow us to increase that window without ever having to worry about staffing. And now we're not, we're not burning the, the jail staff unless somebody fails, of course. But our jail staff is not running back and forth, you know, if, if we don't have anybody up to staff.
It just looks like, yeah, if you just, I don't know, two people, five hours a day, if you're making $10 an hour, over $3,000 a month to be bringing in a person. But they got, it paid for so right there, not even the same, than what you get from the, the thing right now.
And they said we're, we're able, we're able to adjust those testing costs and those, those testing fees. You know, we're able to, to set, you know, fees on using the access to the credit cards and things like that. So, yeah, they're pretty, it sounds like a pretty easy-to-use system. And with the, the contract agreement, it comes with eight hours of training for all staff who are using it. So.
Training your customers too.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and the thing, the thing about that is, you know, for a lot of them, it'd be a pretty similar process to what they're already using. You know, and then learning the process as they're, as they're coming out. We take them through that process when they're, they're leaving our custody and we show them how to do those things. And, and now it would just be kind of relearning. Okay? All right. Yeah.
We're going to Sioux Falls between Water Town and some of the rest of it. 10 or 15 law enforcement vehicles had one car stopped.
We've been busy. We've been busy.
It was crazy.
Yeah, let us know when the demo was gonna.
I will, I will send it out. They had sent me, when they sent me the contract agreement, they sent me the dates they had available. And I told them I had the meeting today and then I'll send them back the information. And they'll, they'll be up here soon. All right.
All right.
The tax levies that Dawn was talking about, she was explaining the, the budget. We have to adopt that by resolution. What else do we need to say about this annual budget for?
Just adopt, adopt a provisional budget as annual budget with, and then we'll follow this, follow the changes. And then we'll also print that in the, the resolution after you guys adopt it and sign it.
The tax, tax levies for general county purposes is 2.708 and the jail bond levy would be .354 for a total of 3.062, which generates $4,183,552. We need a motion and everybody's signature. Mike Carlson, second by John. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I have two.
They can do like this, huh? Get it off your desk.
What happens with Commissioner Depple now? Will he sign it later or not sign it at all?
As long as he's gone today. He's part of the signature. Actually, Chris did all the budget stuff, so.
Practice him up. Get some nicer wheels on that truck. Black ones?
We are moving staff lines and order coming in the parade down there.
Right, for the incoming parade. Okay, we're gonna dig up here and then we gotta visit something else. Parade on Thursday, that was pretty short, like 10 people. Yeah, I thought about that.
Many there? Get in there?
Yeah, I see the boys, the boys are in there, of course, John's gonna sit there laughing, driving, he'll show up with his buddies. Nice day for that. Yeah.
Usually have bad abs in some community down south that's coming in parade where a kid fell off the road.
Or we have run over. We didn't.
Can't remember what time it was, but tragic.
Survivor.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. It's, anyone afraid, you said you shouldn't throw candy, you should walk out panicked to the kids. And Mary said, she's gonna be afraid. We think you have to throw candy. She said, I think so, I mean, I think the school will let you. Of course they were. Uh, yeah, I was kinda surprised.
Her tradition to get away from the boys. Being dressed. Hey, I was hoping somebody would remember that.
That's why Tim called you this morning.
Second to that, Carlson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are paid. Dawn, I've got everything checked off my list. What do you have? Motion to adjourn. Carlson, for gel, that is second. All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye. We're done, thank you.
You expect the people up, you fix up to pay those people?
Pawn and thrift for all your crime needs. Countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, use our online banking to save you time. Still some service in Sisseton with Marathon fuel. Tri-State water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.